They're coming. They're coming.
Okay, we have. That's the old one. Angela is printing them right now.
Oh, the full thing?
The full thing.
Okay.
She's almost done.
Paper budget. You can't, when you do file print and the menu comes up, there's print active page and then print entire workbook. You have to change it. It defaults to just the page. That's what I showed her.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was doing.
I can show you. It'll take a few seconds.
Well, we've got a workshop going. Stand for the pledge.
Budget allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member Drake?
Here.
Board member Niesel?
Here.
Board member Sting?
Here.
Board member Van Markham?
Here.
Supervisor, please go first.
Here. This is an informal workshop. Special meeting is later. That's at two o'clock. We'll have a public hearing at two o'clock and have a public, a special meeting after that. It's not much different than what I presented to you guys. For revenues, I put in a little bit more for the building department and a little bit more for the STRs. For expenditures, I put a little bit more in for insurance and a little bit more in for a couple of other secretaries who are long-term secretaries. Here more than anybody else. So I gave them 50 cents more than the $3 that I gave all the other secretaries. Nothing else has changed really in the... Big chunk is for the building zoning department, of course. And that's something we, we need to talk about aside from budgetary issue is... We have one and three-quarters building inspector. And we're in need of not just a zoning officer, but we need an STR enforcement officer. That's something we haven't designated somebody to do and it's going to take some time and energy. It's probably going to be somebody in the building department, either Donna or, or Peter. It's not a zoning law. It's a standalone law by itself. So really zoning officer isn't... I mean, we could designate the zoning officer to do it also.
So in, in regards to the budget, I definitely have a couple of items.
Okay, let's go back to...
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Please, quiet. Thank you.
So I definitely have a couple of items on the budget, hoping we might just take a quick look at and discuss a little bit.
Absolutely, yeah, sure.
So, call it an easy one here, A99509, which is currently capital projects. I chatted briefly with the county comptroller. She told me that we would be advised to name that county reserve fund. That that's the more appropriate name.
Right.
She said capital projects was not appropriate. So that's, that's just a rename on that one. Additionally, I... This may live in here, but I wasn't entirely sure where. We currently obviously have an expense for floodplain administrator and I wasn't sure where that currently lived in the budget and if that needed to be added in here.
And, and generally that's another of those positions that's taken up by the building inspector code enforcement officer. And I'm thinking that that's going to go back to living with the code enforcement officer. I know Kevin probably wants to get certified. I would like to get certified. We had taken courses. So Eric's certified already. We will have somebody. I, I think that we get Donna trained to...
Do we have, I assume that that training has an expense to it?
The county usually...
It's free, it's... Okay, alright, so, so, okay, so, okay, so I mean if that, if that lives within the budget, it was just something that I noted that we had expended this year. It was not within this year's budget.
Right.
Or next year's budget, sorry. A312014, that's... Was just about to do so. So that's the police chief line. So currently the police chief, we have in the budget 23,000 for this year. The current tentative budget shows 23,500 for next year. I'm proposing that perhaps we increase that somewhat. Personally, I, I think I would feel more comfortable with perhaps 24 or, or at least.
I've, I've spoken with Chad and Rich. You know, they're, they're administrative jobs that don't have a desk in a time period that, I mean, they do a lot of scheduling or picking up for, Rich picking up drugs and whatnot. Do you think they need more money and...
Part of it honestly is, is a separation between the, the, the person perhaps and the role. Obviously, there's always the chance that an individual who's currently filling these roles may depart that position for whatever reason and obviously we don't expect that and hope that never happens. But if we were ever in the position of refilling those positions, the reality is, is in this case, a increase of 2.17% in a year that's had 8.5% inflation, that's, that's realistically a pay cut. And like I said, if, if no one else sees anything with that, but my sense is that making that 24 would perhaps show a better commitment to the police.
Are you talking just police or ambulance as well?
I think they're probably both up for grabs, but if I'm not mistaken, ambulance is... No, sorry, you're correct. Those are 500 on both of those. I think both of those, yes. A thousand dollar increase, I think, would perhaps, for, for each of them, so 500 for each of them.
Yeah, I, I support for sure the increase for Chad. And, and as well as the ambulance, if you're going to be tit for tat and do it, you'd be equal, but you know, keep in mind that the ambulance has three deputy chiefs that...
It's true.
Take care of various administrative duties, whereas, you know, we have Sergeant Sharon, but he's really...
Police are a little thinner on the ground.
You know, he's more of a deputy to Chad, pardon the pun. Whereas the ambulance really has a lot of different people, generally a lot of different roles.
Police was the one that, that caught my eye.
Again, I mean, these are a couple of very dedicated individuals and I understand your point where, you know, if they left us, who would we have? And would we be able to attract another person to that position? I don't... Cross that, I don't, I mean, I could give another 50, $500 if the board is...
I think, I think that's a good idea.
Sure.
For sure, I, I would like to say...
I know, I know, and I mean, we... I mean, I, I think we benefit heavily from who we have.
That was going to be my point, is that if we're going to talk about, you know, retaining talent and individuals and making it a desirable position for people to apply to, maybe we should talk about, you know, paramedics and, and part-time officers.
I mean, I'll...
As opposed to talking about the chiefs, you know, everybody's replaceable at the end and I don't mean that in a negative way to either of those chiefs, but we have a hard time attracting individuals to work, whether it be in the office, the police department, or the ambulance, because we don't give a competitive wage, so I don't know. Penny pinching over chief salaries is the way to go about it, but either way, I support it.
Yeah, how many officers does that 20, 30,000 dollars represent?
20 hours a day, seven days a week.
Now, how, but, yeah, how many?
I mean, we have four full-time and three or four or five.
Is that, I mean, to Kevin's point, yeah, I mean...
And, but the police are contractual, so that's maybe not the best example, but...
And, and the ambulance...
That was sort of my assumption is that the paramedic would be handled within a contract.
The ambulance budget is getting, it's reflected in here. Their, the paramedics and the EMTs and the drivers are all getting a 7% increase for next year. That's what they asked for. It's not a signed contract yet, but it's, it's in the works.
When do we expect the contract?
In the next couple of weeks, we'll get it nailed in. There aren't too many disputes.
Last time I saw it, there was just a few minor ones, but didn't seem like anything too crazy.
And then what I think is probably the last substantive thing that I, I found, or not found exactly, but I would, I would love to see an audit, a GASB audit of the town's finances, and unfortunately, those are not cheap in the slightest. Realistically, I suspect that would be about a $20,000 expense. It would be predominantly focused on controls. But I would love to see that done. And, and I think it would look good if we were to put that into the budget and, and have that for something for next year. And that's separate from a comptroller audit. Those are not, those are not the same.
Right. Well, the controllers require us to do, require us to do a, an audit every couple of years, different than our own.
Yeah, so, so comptroller, the comptroller generally is going to focus on a single area of operations. Often it's procurement, sometimes it's bookkeeping. They also will sometimes do cybersecurity or document upkeep, payroll or timesheets. Like, they generally focus on a single area of operations. A GASB audit generally focuses very closely on financial controls, whether policies are in place and followed, whether things are coded correctly routinely, what controls are in place for making sure that they're coded correctly and routinely, are the correct documents produced and in the format that they should be. And I, I believe, I, I've personally seen no indication of malfeasance or, or any issues of those kind. I, I see no, no, you know, personnel sort of concerns here, but I do... There are certain documents that I haven't necessarily found that I would expect perhaps. And I, trying to sort of retroactive this is admittedly, it's beyond my personal expertise and it's something that I think, again, a, a GASB auditor, that's, that's what they do. That's what they're for. Nonprofits who are in the government sector are required to get them yearly. Townships are not required to do so yearly. My understanding is that they're generally only required to do so when they've received, I believe it's over a million dollars worth of federal funding within a year, which we have on occasion, as best as I can tell. However, I think it's a good practice to do them, perhaps not yearly, it's expensive, but I haven't found any evidence of one in recent history. I, I, they might exist, but I haven't found the paperwork. And so again, I think it shows, yes, they are expensive. There's no way around that. But I think that it would, it would show a commitment towards transparency and good governance for the coming year.
I'd like to know, you say expensive, I'd like to know how expensive.
I, obviously, about 20,000 is what I would expect, yeah. That's, that's admittedly not in my experience with my offices, was, was audited by the comptroller, but... Yeah. They threw me out of my office when they did mine. I, yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen any of that. Do you know whether we had an audit last year or the year before? For an audit? So if we already have that effectively in the budget, then... Correct. We have a line in there for accounting currently. However, I've been under the impression that that was for our routine accounting service in the preparation of financial documents.
Which line are you guys talking about?
I see independent accounting, A13154.
Right.
However, that only has 20,000 in it and we have other additional... Normal, normal work, right.
No, the accountant's been running about $5,000.
So perhaps my proposal... So perhaps my proposal here would be to make A13154... So I guess my proposal is to make A13154 independent accounting contractual 25,000, 5,000 roughly for our existing accounting expenses with an additional 20,000 on, in there for a project around accounting, a, a minor increase to that line. If, if folks are amenable to that.
Sure. But also realize that the money that's come in is, no, never mind. It, it could get, it could help. Sure. I'll add the 5,000 in. That's not a problem. Right, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, if we think going back to 35,000 would be safer to cover those expenses, I mean, it's, it's whatever we think would be appropriate amount for our current accounting expenses plus enough to seek an independent audit.
Sure, I could lift that right back up to 35,000. Better be safe than sorry.
That's all I had in my notes.
And I'll raise the, the police and the ambulance chief 500 more. To 24,000. For the police and the ambulance chief.
22.
Yeah. 22.
Records management, since we, we're saving a lot of money since we went digital, you can drop that. But I'd say 500 this year, maybe more next year. Any records management contractual?
Down to 4500?
I would say sure.
Okay.
The digital boxes, it was a lot cheaper. I mean, the microfilm. And then next year, we'll take it all. I mean, it does help, right? I mean, I'd really see it go down. I mean, you could probably go down. I mean, should I go down? I, I don't know. I don't want to jump too far, but I know we saved a lot of money by going digital. And we're not going to need much next year.
Go down to 4...
If I need to go up next year, if I'm all...
Let's go down to 4,000.
Go to 4,000 on that.
And we can seek that grant again.
Welcome to the digital world.
See?
See? We'll call it off on the payroll.
Are we really expecting to see $20,000 in legal fees from last year?
It, it wasn't that huge this year.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's, it's another, again, like Rob was saying, it's, it's one of those things where if you start getting into a legal brouhaha, then it, it can add up. But we have other...
Okay.
Don't make anybody angry.
Well, I will, I'll try.
Do it this year.
I think that should be sale.
Anything, Kyle?
Is everybody okay with the elected officials' salaries going up? On the board? That's okay.
I, I definitely have my own reservations about those personally, especially considering we've all been privy to certain... You know, not, I wouldn't say demands, but requests for salary increases that haven't been met 100%. In particular, I would like to see the secretaries in the office get that extra 50 cents that they requested. Bring it up to, I think it was, we're at 350 now, bring it up to 4. And make everyone happy. It's a livable wage that they haven't been provided with. As far as the elected official salary go, that's, might be more of a moral thing in my head when it comes to public service and salaries and putting employees first. Yeah, no, I'm not 100% on that at all.
You did say that you did raise, I, I just called it, you did say you did add, this is differently from this budget to this budget?
All that, the first budget had all, everybody raised at $3, the, the secretaries raised up $3.
Uh huh.
And then on the new budget, I have Jackie and Kara up 50 cents more.
Uh huh.
For their years.
Okay. I don't know, I just see...
For whatever it's worth, by my calculation, a 50 cent increase is $910 across the course of a year. So for us to get to $4, that would be 18, well, for two people, it'd be 1820.
Sure.
I could calculate what that would be.
So we're talking 2,000 for two people, right?
Right. We, we went up 2,000 for the two people. I gave 50 cents.
So you're talking less than an elected official increase.
So as far as my position, I, I couldn't do what I can do without the girls. So I would just like a $500 raise and just put me a 40. I'd rather, yeah, the office gets... So anyway, so, you know, I mean, because it's important we have a team that helps us do our jobs. I do a lot. I do, you know, I always talk about I do all this and I don't get paid, but I like doing it. And I can't do that stuff if I don't have my team covering all the mundane clerk stuff. You know, I mean, that's, this team has been great.
But you have your team.
I know, but I don't need that big a raise. I'm happy with my amount.
You want...
I just want an even number. I like even numbers. So just do a 500. Is that okay with everybody?
It's okay with me.
I think it's the right thing to do.
Sure.
Yeah, I love the job, so...
Well, thank you for taking the moral hike around there.
I do it for free, but don't tell anybody.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The one here is me.
What?
Just call them about.
I know. I do love it. But it's a horrible job. Don't run against me. Yeah, special meetings.
It is a special meeting.
Yeah, because I did the legal announcement.
This is a workshop meeting.
Yeah, but the legal, I'll, Peter, I did the, Ash told me to do 1 o'clock.
I wanted us to work it out.
I understand that.
Before the public gets involved.
I understand that, and that's fine, but when you put it out to the public on the town website, you can't sit at this meeting and call it a workshop. What is on the agenda is a special workshop, special meeting.
We always want to hear what you have to say.
If you might, I, I think, you know, in theory, this is an hour. We can continue discussing for a little bit and then make sure we have some time for public comment at the end, 10, 15 minutes. No, 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 I, I think it's entirely appropriate for us to take public comment. I think we've just got a bit of conversation we'd like to, to finish here. So if I'm not mistaken on this, the salary lines that increase would be A141012, which would go up an additional $910 and that is... Sorry, one second. That is the town clerk deputy personal services rate, so that would go up to $4 if I'm not mistaken. That's what... Sorry, yes?
Well, so, so there's... We're talking about going up $3, which is the original. And then I put 3.5. 3.5 up for two and...
So then the conversation...
Heaven's offering that we should put 3.5 to everyone, all the secretaries.
And four. And four for...
Because that was the, the initial request was $20, right? Is what the base was in the email, correct?
Four for everyone. If it's seven secretaries...
They don't all make the same amount. That's... It's a $4 increase across the...
About $6,200 over the course of a year to raise the salaries of all seven, $4 an hour.
At, at this point, we, we are raising them 18-plus percent, blah, blah, blah. We've never done anything more than 3 or 4% before. This is, this is huge and I, they deserve it. They deserve it. I agree. Can we, can we afford that?
Well, if...
Sure.
Yeah, if we...
Do I still hurt park?
I, I need to know.
It is a, a couple of thousand dollars. It's, it's...
It's an extra $1,560 to take them all up from $3 an hour to $4 an hour.
Yeah, but it was the extra...
No, I'm, I'm adding it up right now.
A dollar an hour times seven times 30 times... Yeah.
I, I agree that it's a really big expense as a whole with the secretaries, and it, um, it was never done on, for Rob was in office. Rob gave everybody, um, a percentage, however, Rob, um...
Go ahead.
However, Rob, um, was not hiring people off the streets at fifty dollars an hour, forty dollars an hour, twenty-five dollars an hour, to make us all feel this big. So, when you honor the people who have been here for five, six, and seven, twenty-seven years, I think that we deserve to be paid what we're worth, um, instead of bringing in new people and offering them fifty grand a year, maybe you could reward us for the work that has kept us building the float.
We're working, thanks Kara.
Yeah, see, I don't get that five, but I do get it from the board, which I appreciate a lot, thank you guys.
So, if my math is correct, and we were to raise all secretaries four dollars, which would be five individuals going one dollar above this budget, and two individuals going fifty cents above this budget. If I've mathed that out correctly, that would be an increase overall of ten thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
That's what I got.
And in theory, that could be offset by elected salaries by... I don't have that in front of me, sorry.
Joyce just decreased twenty-five...
I want the forty, here, you need that.
Yes, thank you.
I actually do want... Oh, here, another one, keep that.
No, you can, you can have this, I don't want paper, but thank you.
So if you could do that, if I could do that, Peter, you could well do something, it's too much. It's too much for this town, we're not Olive, where they make a fortune. I mean, I'm just saying. It'd be nice, but I think the way that our staff is...
I'll drop mine down five hundred dollars.
I think you should go down as far as me.
Grace, where do you want to drop yours down?
Grace, this is more of our community, this is my tariff.
Pink, black, and four, mine. In my opinion, if you care to do the tax, these three salaries, hers, yours, and mine, have always been the same for the past eight years.
Yeah.
Whatever this board feels comfortable offering, I am more than happy to pay, I can ask for a raise.
All right.
I think a thousand...
Assuming that those three lines remain the same, I have no comment.
Yeah, I'd like to remain the same, I don't feel that I do enough work, and I'm here the most, we should be even at least, or I should be more than you. That's what they do in Olive, believe it or not.
Yeah.
I know, but I didn't say that.
I know, I know, you know, what they do in Olive, and what they do in Woodstock, and what they do here and there.
No offense, I'll...
Capping those three, forty, brings us down seventy-five hundred.
So, giving the secretaries four dollars an hour, but the supervisor can't get a dollar an hour?
Yeah, that's...
Joyce can't get a dollar?
I'm not asking for it, I think it's a... I, well, I feel that, I think our town is financially stressed enough.
Joyce, Joyce.
I know, it's nice, but I don't want to.
Oh, wait, you can't do that, Peter, no. You can't be, you cannot quiet her.
I'm talking to Joyce.
No, you are trying to quiet anybody who says anything against you.
Joyce, if...
We've been through this before, Peter, you cannot shut people up.
Been through anything.
She has the right, she has the right to say what she wants.
And she said it, and she said it.
Yes, but you're trying to quiet her when you said to her, zip it. You don't have that control over people, Peter. This is always going to be the problem with you and I. You cannot shut people up, people have the right to speak their mind.
You always speak your mind.
And that's right, but everyone, not just me, Joyce has the right too.
Of course she does.
Then why did you tell her to zip it?
I'm so quiet over it.
No, Joyce, it's not that you...
Can the, can the board return to a conversation?
Everybody's first amendment right.
Move on.
What?
Move on, please.
Me move on?
Please.
You, this is your workshop, right?
This is sick.
So go ahead, move on.
So why don't we let the board decide on our payrolls? They're the ones going to vote on it, I'm happy with what I, with forty thousand, that's fine. It's not going to kill me.
Okay, forty thousand for all?
Yes, if it's okay with Grace. Okay with you? What? Now, wait.
You just said nothing.
What?
Then you said you're giving yourself five hundred, which is...
We'll be up to...
You said you want me to raise, Grace said she needed to raise.
I said I want a five hundred dollar raise to make it even forty thousand, instead of forty-two.
Then you backed off, because you just said that you would take nothing, you said you'd be the grace, you don't want to raise.
All right.
No, I don't want to stop that, I want to be a number.
Hey, if we drop down the elected officials to a five hundred dollar raise, bring you guys to four thousand dollars, that would offset the cost of the secretaries, correct?
Correct.
Almost.
I'm in favor of that.
There you go.
Second.
Yeah.
I know, wasn't a motion, but... The second one in favor of...
Straw pole.
No, you know, some of these wages have to go up, because when we leave, nobody's going to want these jobs, but we, but we matter, we know, we know, we matter.
So I, I...
I know.
Seems like somebody's working in all the jobs right now, and then you're elected.
You're going to live forever, Joyce, don't worry.
I believe that offsets seventy-five hundred of ten thousand nine hundred and twenty, in theory, that would raise the overall budget by three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Personally, I'm comfortable with that as an overall increase, unless we wish to find other offsets.
Well, increased over the two point...
An, an overall town-wide budget increase of three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, understanding that that goes to the field, but I think that's a reasonable in, increase for the overall budget.
That's including your accounting change?
No, that's just this particular change that's that...
By the way, this house, do one in.
Yeah, we raised it fifteen hundred, back to thirty thousand.
Thirty-five.
Thirty. Twenty to, twenty thousand to thirty-five thousand in order to accommodate the accounting change, correct?
Uh, I do have one more question, sorry.
Go ahead.
What's the thirty-two, or, yeah, there, uh, the point-three-two percent decrease in Pine Hill Fire?
Uh, Pine Hill Fire themselves, they've decreased their
Budget?
Budget, while they increased Highmount.
Oh.
Four points.
Great.
Four point five three.
Okay.
One, understood.
One.
Yeah, did they provide a line item, or?
Yeah.
What?
They have it written out on their budget saying that their equipment...
I'm just going to give you heads up, you know, like, they're, they're taxing more Pine... So they have a budget, why would you tax Highmount? Why would a property that's tied in Highmount pay more than Pine Hill for fireworks? Why would the tax increase go up if it's a percentage, then everybody should go up equally, you know what I'm saying?
Takes longer to get there.
Pine Hill and Highmount should be... I, I did it up here, that's not...
Okay.
Based there, we submit for higher than...
Okay.
I'll bounce it back.
Their budgets come from each district, though?
Yeah, they all...
Well, we can't tell them they are on the same increase.
No, so, there's a fire district, and there's a fire protection district, and Pine Hill's the only fire protection district, so we control the budget, whereas...
When's the last time the town board members were raising? Come here next year.
Don't want to talk...
Nope.
Ew. No, thank you.
If there's no other comments, maybe we open it up to the public at this time?
Yeah, have, please, let's hear some comments from the public, anybody who's...
Thank you guys for waiting.
Yes.
We appreciate your patience.
So much.
Would you like to bike a phone?
Really?
Yeah.
Adam, you're on my phone.
I don't, I'm trying to be kind.
So can, can you explain the town clerk part-time deputy how that went up so very much, almost double, or...
Could you give me the line item?
That's one day more a week.
A-one-four, one-zero-one-three, town clerk part-time deputy.
Thank you.
That's one day a week, times the three dollars an hour increase, which will go up to four.
She works one day a week?
She worked one more day a week, so the increase in one day plus the...
How many days was she working?
She was working three days, well, she was budgeted.
Yeah, budgeted, three days.
It was budgeted as three days a week.
She has been working four days.
Right.
And it jumped that much?
Or you're going to need that next year, if Grace is going to be doing the SDR stuff.
We're not sure what, we're not sure, okay, so we're not sure what... SDR stuff.
That was if she had to do the SDR stuff, and we're not too sure, I'm not doing the SDR anymore, so, that's what you need, right?
And my next question is, Peter?
Yes.
Peter? Peter, well, to you. How many jobs do you get paid for in the town attorney department right now?
That I get paid for?
Yeah.
I get paid for being the town supervisor.
That's it?
That's it.
You're not taking any other monies from the town, standing there to be paid for any other job, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm not driving, I'm not driving for the ambulance.
No? I, I just want to say, Robert, I'm all for an audit. I, I like the idea...
They're expensive, but I think they come out beneficial in the end.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's it, I'm done.
What job are you getting paid for? Was I sure you're not comparing the road jobs?
I don't know, that doesn't show me getting paid.
Um, I'm going to back to you, Peter, I don't think you deserve a raise, I think you still owe the Pinesha North District seven thousand dollars for a truck that was bought illegally, uh, unresolved. Uh, just the opening of this meeting alone shows just, you have no idea really what you're doing at the time. So, um, yeah, I'm against you getting any, a raise whatsoever, I don't see where you add any value to the town by being the town supervisor. Uh, I do question a lot of your numbers, you can say shortages and whatever you got, uh, I certainly don't see our liability insurance going up almost fifty percent more, the cost, not, don't see that. I'm going to bet that the insurance was about ninety, ninety-five thousand last year, so maybe we get a little into the contingency.
Just ask Barbara what it was, and she'll tell you.
Okay, so why would it go up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand, because we should have an estimate right now?
I'm waiting for that estimate, I asked Barbara to get it, she hasn't gotten it yet.
How much did you pay last year in insurance?
Hundred and, last year.
Last year or this year?
You're giving me this.
So this year...
I'm going to listen.
This year's went out at a hundred and ten?
Yeah, this year was a...
For the liability insurance?
Correct.
You paid in January a hundred and ten thousand dollars?
It was like a hundred and seven, and then there were some add-ons because of cars moving in and out, and truck repair.
Hundred and... Okay, I'd like to see that, because we wouldn't have, we didn't have that, we're not allowed to change from twenty-nine and four, so your insurance...
Last year it was budgeted, last year it was budgeted for eighty-two.
For eighty-two.
Yeah, and, and last year, last year was ninety-nine or ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
This was one of the first questions that I had, because I, I remember the bill coming in at around one-ten.
I'll follow, but, I'll listen, but the fact that you don't know the exact... Again, if you're doing all the loans, what, how many police officers do you have in the...
Oh, stop it, you know, I'm not, I'm not taking questions.
You sit here and talk nonsense, and you want to just talk about...
You want to comment, make comments.
You don't deserve a raise.
Do all the comments you want.
What, okay?
This, this really should be a conversation with the entire board.
I'm sorry, but it's...
I, I know, but this really is intended to be a conversation with the entire board, it's not intended to be two people chatting, the rest of us are here. You're welcome to pitch questions to the entire board, but picking a fight, do it in the hallway afterwards, please.
It's, no, 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 you, you misunderstand, he is the supervisor of this town, I'm asking you questions, he's laughing off. Do your job if you like, he controls the meeting, if he would like to control it, he's a gavel, and control it, or if he feels I'm picking on him because I'm asking financial, please...
No, but I wish you would ask those to the entire board, we are all signers of these checks, I know how much we paid on insurance, and I can look it up.
He's asking for a raise, you're not, Robert, he wants a raise, I disagree, I don't think he knows what he's doing.
That comment has been made, thank you.
Okay, I'm making it clear, he's lost seven thousand dollars to the taxpayers of Pinesha, and there's no way to recoup, and he's going to play this game like he's trying to figure out...
And the comment has been made, and we appreciate it, and it will be considered in our work.
And for a point of clarity, for a point of clarity, it was five thousand dollars for that vehicle, and I did not lose it, Rick said he would pay it back.
Oh, you're making Rick pay for all of this vehicle?
Rick offered, I'm not making him do anything.
You're on your mind, this is crazy.
No, no, no.
It's unbelievable.
I believe the intent, as it was reported, no shit, the messenger, that Rick was going to get the money back from the person he bought the truck from, is what I heard. I don't know that it's true, I don't know that it's happening, as the plan is, I understand it, and we will be following up on it, I promise you. I'll let you know personally.
I don't think we need to say the case.
You should have mentioned that, honey.
Excuse me, Robert, just to clarify this, again, he is the supervisor.
But we are all equal authority. We all, yes, we do, we all have equal legal authority.
As a vote, when you vote, but he is the supervisor, so he is the one at the top, so when things go wrong, and who has...
We are all equally responsible for that.
No, we're not.
We all signed those checks.
He is responsible, he is responsible.
We are all responsible.
Every chapter has to be signed by him.
And two of us, at least.
That's right, but it has to be him.
What I'm indicating here is that this conversation is with the entire board, we're trying to come up with a budget for the whole town, having an individual conversation with the supervisor does not help all of us.
If the board agrees, I would love to hear from the board, maybe with Peter getting a raise, that is my question, to the rest of the board.
If I'm not mistaken, we as a board decided that forty thousand for the three elected positions, assessor, town clerk, and supervisor appeared to be acceptable in order to offset the raise to four dollars an hour for the remaining secretaries, is that an accurate summary?
It is.
Yes.
Okay, so you're giving somebody a raise who doesn't deserve it, and she's done a good job to warrant the raise.
I think...
Grace, I'm not arguing, and you're lumping in people, you're, you're doing what Eric is talking about, you're lumping all the elected together, bum, bum, bum. Grace, yeah, Grace has been busting her ass trying to handle the zoning stuff and everything, and your assessing position.
Just, just...
So, yeah, she's up, she's up for the SDR, what are you doing to add value to your job?
Increase in a year with eight percent inflation and a health car going soft, I don't think it is a raise.
Did everybody else in the country get an eight percent raise at their job, I know the girls here did, because we were just sitting here talking about it.
No, we'd love to give them an eight percent raise, but we are running out of money.
They're getting, it's more than twenty percent.
I don't know what percentage is worth that.
And the taxpayers didn't get any...
It's more than twenty percent.
But they're going to pay the taxes, and the salaries.
Apparently they're getting a, apparently they're getting a close to a twenty percent raise.
Good, all time.
Yeah.
I mean, before we add...
We don't have, I don't think anybody in town has a problem with them getting a raise at, at all, at all.
Not that I have to raise my hand, but for what it's worth, critiques aside, the amount of work that that job takes, you've done it, clearly.
Right.
I've done it, Pete's done it.
Right.
Do I think forty thousand across the board for those three who historically are in line is fair? I do.
As a truth, but you can pick them out individually, that's what I'm saying, these are...
I know you can.
You can pick them out individually, say, raise it up, choice it up, rip it up.
I appreciate the compromise the board has made to support the women in the office, and the employees in the office, and...
I'm glad that they got their raises, I don't think that's what it takes, to give Peter a five hundred dollar raise, get the raises.
But, to be fair, Peter, that's news to town hall, that saves us some money.
Oh, now it's going to be compared to my...
This is really unnecessary, I believe the comments have been made, are there any new comments?
Does someone have a gavel?
He's literally holding it, this one, dude.
Please, stay on subject.
What the hell I did in my turn of office, Robert, have no bearing on what's fucking going on in this town hall, Robert.
Language.
This guy is just a retard.
Language.
Really unnecessary.
Really?
I'm just so...
Unbelievable.
Really?
You're so dumb.
Really?
Robert, yeah.
You're just a bully.
It's a fact, you stopped over there.
Oh, my facts, really, really, okay. Do we have anything else to add or subtract from the budget?
I'm good on the tenner budget.
All right.
Motion to close the, uh, special meeting?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five minutes, we'll open the public room.
First town board meeting?
Okay, we'll be back in five minutes.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, I look to become regular.
Naisel?
Still here.
Board members, Steve?
Here.
Board member Van Plarkum?
Here.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Here.
I'll read the notice, please, first.
Shandaken Town Board calls for a special meeting on the two thousand twenty-three Shandaken tenner budget to be held on Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at one P M. To discuss the budget, town board also possibly perceives the need to exceed the New York State tax cap, local law three, two thousand twenty-two. A public hearing will be held on this issue on Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at two P M, to hear all those for or against at the Shandaken Town Hall, seven two zero nine State Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York, one two four eight O.
Thank you. Public hearing is open to exceed the tax cap.
Do we know how much?
We do not yet, it's gonna be exceeding the tax cap, it was at point two-four percent over two percent before we had our meeting. We added a bit to it, so it'll be probably closer to three.
So you foresee going to a three percent tax cap?
I foresee us having to go to three percent tax cap.
Would you say that the elderly people in our town, I'm not here of the demographics of our town, the elderly can afford raises in taxes? So if there's any way you can save money in this budget, I suggest you go back to the board. That's it, I'm done.
Yes, Rob.
First off, I'd like to sincerely apologize for my apologies, I got a little fired up. You're welcome, second, and I sincerely want to apologize for what I said, how angry I was. Second, I understand, you guys got the tax cap, been there, no one has to be done at times, again, considering just the raises alone, I know that would probably put us over. But I'm gonna tell you right now, again, just to point out quickly to add, it's probably about three point two percent, just in my head, you got a calculator there, I don't know if you couldn't calculate it at the time. But, go ahead, you're gonna ask, I want to apologize for what I said, about the tax cap, but if I can calculate right now, twenty-five, twenty, not the exact number, you can do it if you're able.
Anyone else want to speak about the tax cap? All right. If we give it five more minutes, just in case somebody wants to come in, was slated to start at two and it's only two oh seven.
Some reason.
Five more minutes. I will say that we're going to probably have another special meeting for you guys to think about in two weeks. Because we won't change the tentative to the preliminary tonight or today, because we don't have all our facts and figures in front of us. We'll do that before the, the two-week period, we'll put a notice in the paper to have another special meeting. And we'll accept the tentative budget, hopefully, as the preliminary budget, so we can go into November's meeting with a preliminary budget and then what people can look at online.
Yeah, I won't check that, I think you have to have a preliminary budget entered by, by October fifteenth.
And preliminary budget can change.
No, preliminary can change when you go to the actual budget, but for county taxing services, I'm a little concerned.
I gave you the letter off the top of my head, it was October nineteenth, but that's not on my head.
That's what I'm saying, you don't have time to schedule another meeting before.
So you got it before nine?
Then we adopt it as a preliminary and then we can always change things, given the public hearing.
So we're, we're.
Just to get, just so everything's in.
Right, okay.
You adopted.
So we are adopting the tentative budget that pre-existed today's meeting as the preliminary.
That's a big tall fault, that, they ought to be printed out.
Well, but, we haven't really, we don't have the changes, right, you know, so I think we have to be.
So you can do this resolution now.
And then we're called, we don't have to have that separate meeting.
Can I help?
Right, please help.
Can I help? Just make the resident, you had a resolution, you had a new resolution to be accepted, just say we accept it with and specifically outline the changes that you guys discussed that you want to change, whatever it is.
Changes are listed, that works.
As you said it before, give them four percent to give five hundred, as stated is that, the math can be.
So I need the list for the website when I do the paper copies.
Right, okay.
So I do that.
I never had to be there like thirty months.
Yeah, I know there's a way to do it.
They have to start setting up the taxation.
Oh, yeah, and then we have to spend it in a family.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Rob.
Preliminary's gotta be in by October twenty-first, final's gotta be in by November twenty-first.
Yeah. I can board with you now.
No, I got it on my door. I got a lot of these.
Get the full list of the changes.
What's that?
Get the full list of the changes.
I'm creating it right now.
Yeah, I've got it if you need.
Of course.
Yeah. You picked a fun one.
Sometimes more fun.
I missed that one.
Yahtzee.
I told them, it did not last, it did not last.
When I say smell, could I, in my house, it's frozen, I'm frozen, I smell, I didn't want to put that face, I don't want people to think I'm cold.
It's weird, I used to make a lot more pies before the kids were born, somehow I have less time now, I don't know why, maybe the days got shorter.
Couple of things, yeah. Decrease records management to four thousand. And change capital reserve fund, or capital projects to capital reserve fund, that's a naming change.
Capital reserve to capital project?
Capital project to capital reserve fund.
Yeah, the rename.
Yeah. Building contractual. Building maintenance contractual, that's where that's. Eighty-four, five.
Are you all okay with me making a motion to increase Donna's salary?
Nobody even touched it.
We didn't touch that yet.
Yeah, that's, that should have.
Yeah, okay, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
What are we doing?
Closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, resolution one twenty-four twenty-two, resolution adopting tentative budget as preliminary budget. Not the two, oh, you're still, I'm sorry. Okay, resolution one twenty-four twenty-two, resolution adopting tentative budget as preliminary budget, whereas the town of Shandaken is prepared a two thousand twenty-three tentative budget for review. And with changes, reducing the elected supervisor, clerk, and assessor salaries down to forty thousand dollars each. We're gonna reduce, uh, the records management line down to four thousand, we're bringing the accountant line up to thirty-five thousand. We're bringing the police chief line up to twenty-four thousand, we're bringing the ambulance chief line up to twenty-two thousand. We are changing from capital project to capital reserve account. In the verdict, therefore be it resolved, the town.
Wait, was there insurance lines up? The insurance from twenty to thirty-five?
No, it was the audit line and we did that.
Therefore, the, the town of Shandaken is prepared to two thousand twenty-three tentative budget for review, therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shandaken hereby adopts the two thousand twenty-three tentative budget as the two thousand twenty-three preliminary budget for the town of Shandaken and I move its adoption.
Second.
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Naisel?
Yes.
Board member Steve?
Yes.
Board member Plarkum?
Yes.
Board supervisor De Scapani?
Yes. I'll do this one too, resolution one twenty-five twenty-two, adopting the town of Shandaken local law number three, twenty-two, a local law to override the tax levy limit as established in the general municipal law, section three dash C. Whereas the town of Shandaken foresees the necessity to exceed the tax levy limit established in the general municipal law, section three slash dash C. And whereas the town of Shandaken town board held a public hearing on Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at the Shandaken Town Hall to hear all those in favor and against the adoption of the said law in accordance with the municipal law. And therefore be it resolved, that the town of Shandaken town board does hereby adopt the local law number three of two thousand twenty-two in order to allow the town to exceed the tax levy limit composed on the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year budget for the town of Shandaken, I move its adoption.
Second.
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Naisel?
Yes.
Board member Steve?
Yes.
Board member Plarkum?
Yes.
Board supervisor De Scapani?
Yes. I also need to make a motion because Rob correctly informed us last month that I did give somebody a raise without doing the resolution from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars for Donna Lemoine.
Who wants to make a motion?
I think Peter just made the motion.
I know, the motion.
Is, is, just to go ahead, is that the twenty-five and a half hours supposed to reflect in the budget?
Correct.
One second.
Twenty-five, not twenty-six, right?
Twenty-five.
In the budget?
In this budget? What did I do for her? I think I left it at.
Oh, it doesn't give a number?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
So you had somebody else there that was getting paid more?
More than what?
More than what was due by resolution? It was five dollars more an hour?
Five dollars more, yes.
Five dollars, who decided that?
I may have, it's, it's eighteen hundred and twenty hours a year. So divide the salary at eight, forty, it may have been twenty-six dollars, right? But that's for next year.
Yeah.
This year is twenty-five. Do you want to go higher than that?
So we, we gave her a five dollar raise, that wasn't discussed?
That was discussed when she finished her courses and we discussed doing the same thing with Peter McGurk. He came to work with us when he finished his courses. They were both asking for thirty dollars an hour, there isn't a building inspector in Ulster County to be found.
Okay.
She has completed her courses.
Yes. About a month ago when we did the increase.
There was a discussion was hired at twenty and she'd go to twenty-five and she completed. That was what was discussed ahead of time, we just never went back and did the motion.
Okay, we discussed that at a town board meeting?
We did.
No, not at a town board meeting, no, when she, when the offers were being made, well, anyway, Peter told me about it when we were talking about hiring a building, you're looking at hiring at twenty-five and then he said he was gonna pay them twenty until they passed their courses.
Okay.
I know, I discussed it with.
It was never in a, in a meeting.
Sure, I discussed it with you too, but maybe I missed you, I discussed it with Kevin, no?
I don't ever remember the number twenty-five dollars, I know we discussed giving a pay increase after completion of courses, but how long have they been getting twenty-five an hour?
About a month.
Bummer.
I know we're in the budget next year, she'll, she'll be at twenty-six an hour.
Can I ask what the line is that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Eight, eight, zero, one, zero, one.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Eight, eight, zero, one, zero, one.
Building and zoning enforcement personnel service, full time.
What else is in that line, can I ask?
That line is, is her salary.
Only her salary?
Code enforcement officer.
Well, it says, it says building and zoning enforcement, personal service.
Well, she's a code enforcement and includes doing some zoning stuff or.
But that's her line, just her line, that's just down that line?
The, the name of the line is perhaps not entirely.
Yes, but the thing says thirty-one thousand five hundred.
She's building, she's building.
That was last year's budget.
Forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty.
Right. When we can find somebody at nineteen dollars an hour, that's what that equated to.
So you're paying her forty-seven thousand dollars next year?
Correct.
So it's not twenty-six thousand?
Do you want to find a, a building inspector for us?
Peter, I'm asking you questions, if you can't answer.
Don't be so hard on me, this is what we're talking about.
It's right there.
No, because you're saying twenty, it went from twenty to twenty-five?
Last month, right.
But this is forty-seven thousand?
That's for next year, that's next year.
It's twenty-six an hour.
This is thirty-one thousand five hundred for the year.
Forty-seven.
Because it reflect, it reflects an increase from twenty to twenty-six because the, the five dollar increase was never done.
The thirty-one five is not the nineteen or twenty hour.
If it's a six dollar raise or a five dollar raise being reflected.
The thirty-one five is what was budgeted a year ago before we had our current building supervisor, inspector. Whatever the check is, it has nothing to do with how much she's paid, it's what was budgeted for our previous inspector and we could not hire a building inspector at that rate. Which is below twenty an hour, I believe it's nineteen, is it?
Nineteen.
Do I, I don't know the exact number of hours the previous inspector worked. But yes, forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a year is twenty-six dollars an hour for one thousand eight hundred and twenty hours a year.
Now, did I miss something when you read the changes that you were making, because I didn't hear it, you're saying something about the secondary raises? I heard, um, yours, yours, Joyce's, the raises raised to forty thousand, went down to forty thousand, forty thousand for workers.
We didn't miss them.
I missed the important.
So I think you missed something, is what I'm saying, I don't see anything.
I believe that was mentioned, but I honestly, at this point, I'm tired, but.
And the changes, when you read the.
No, I, I recognize what you're saying, my, I had noted that it had. I, no, I, I recognize what you're saying. My, I had noted that it had been said, but maybe it was not. I.
Add it to the minutes, we're changing secretary of salary. Thank you. Uh, my only comment on, what?
You wrote it all down?
I do, I do, yeah. We all do.
Just add it to the minutes.
I have it written down.
Uh, my comment on Donna, I understand completely the woes of the building department. I think you know that. I agree that we need to be paying more to attract people. I've already made that clear. I'm okay with 25 an hour. I have issues with the way this has been handled and we can talk about that later. But I just want that to be clear.
Thanks.
Yeah, so 25 is cool.
If, if I'm not mistaken, we already have a motion and a second. Correct?
We're not mistaken. Yes. August 19th. Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's going to be a lower amount of budget? What are you going to do for budget?
Budget line item isn't changing.
Budget's not changing.
It's, it's, it's still, the preliminary is as we just.
No.
Right, for now.
Do you have time for my issue?
Sure. You have an issue?
Joyce has an issue.
I have an issue. No, besides, no, something to add. All right, so are you all done? A little bit, bring them home?
Um, well, I, I still want to talk about the building department. Where we're going to need floodplain manager and a, an STR enforcement officer. Any thoughts?
All right.
Are we okay with, with that going into the building department?
STR man, enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially for $6 an hour. Um, yes. I am personally, as far as floodplain manager goes, it can either be you just because by virtue of being supervisor, it could be Eric, although I don't think he wants the extra responsibility. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not, it's not a shot. I plan on taking the course. I would gladly take that responsibility over once I pass, you know. But Heidi is kind of keeping me in the loop. I can take it sometime over the winter, probably.
Right.
So if we want to plan for that, otherwise it can be somebody in the building department. I don't know that they're going to want to do it. You know, it is daunting, sort of, especially in this town that has quite a bit of flip home properties.
Yeah. Like, I think you and I being certified is a plus and, and getting somebody in the building department certified.
Sure.
But, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, I think we're doing the right thing in going back to it being an uncompensated position, which is what it has been in the past. So for instance, if I do it, it will be at no additional penalty.
Right.
In regards to the first bit about STR enforcement, just some clarity on this. So ultimately, this would be the person who's responsible for assembling our paperwork for taking individuals to court.
To court, right. And mostly folks who have not, uh, or the people who are running an STR.
Without a license, but, but.
It would also be about doing what we've been doing.
Right. Where, where, where I'm, I'm going with this, this particular question is, does anyone in the building office have experience with taking things to court?
I haven't asked, but I, I.
Grace has the knowledge for the violation.
Well, so, so I'm thinking that that may be a conversation perhaps to, I just, it seems like that's an area where we, we need either training or, or a person with experience, but we don't necessarily want a person untrained taking.
I, of course.
It's just a zoning violation. What, it's not like they have to go and be their, their, you know, representing.
It's not, it's not the attorney, but you do have to have your sort of paperwork. I, I, this is an area that I admit, I don't have a lot of experience, right?
It's, essentially, it's the same as any other zoning violation, whether, you know, we'll use a junkyard as an example.
Yeah.
It's, it's the same, it should be the same process.
We have a short law. It gives what's permitted and what's.
So she, she does have experience with violations on, say, junkyard.
Well, Grace is, we're not talking about me doing this.
We're not talking about Grace. We're talking about.
That, that's what I want to kind of clarify here is, is.
You want to use as a reference to mention you have some knowledge.
Right, and I'm happy to help, but.
No, I, we're not trying to make it for you.
Who's the responsibility of this going to fall on?
I, I think that's what we're trying to.
And what compensation? Because if we're talking about even more money yet, that's going to be a big problem.
Is there money and, money and poo, which, because that's where we're headed. But before that, is there any problem with, uh, uh, something that is not a zoning regulation going through the zoning office? The STR law is not a zoning.
No, but is, the, the town board can designate anybody to be an STR or any officer. We can appoint anybody, you know, Peter or Donna, I think are ideal fits for that.
Got no additional compensation.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be part of, I mean, it, it shouldn't be something that they're doing.
Have we spoken to Donna?
I don't know how much time this takes to do.
I, I had a meeting set to have with Donna and Peter yesterday. Donna had gotten in an accident the night before, hit a deer. She was shaken up, so we're, we're going to meet in a few days.
So perhaps we follow up on that conversation after that, just to make sure that.
And do we have any idea how, do, do we have a feel? Do you, from your phone, have some research?
I know we have the.
We had, um, Grace and I clarified a few, it was like 16 or something, or whatever, either signed up, dropped out, yeah, whatever. I have 10 that are in violation right now.
Okay.
That we would definitely take to court.
That we know about.
Which, you know, I, I could take to court.
Right.
I talked with Tom Crusay, it's not real hard to feature. We do one, first one. And these three of ones actually got our notifications, so that's, that's right. You know, they saw the notification, they had three violations. That's one go out.
Do we have an idea of what, what hours, how many hours it takes to take some?
Well, we won't know until, I, I think, you know, we've already agreed, um, to pay Joyce to be the intake officer.
Till the end of the year.
Till the end of the year. We, Joyce offered to do it, you know, do a few until the end of the year. Or until she thinks it's not appropriate, and then we can, you know, appoint.
I didn't know if you had a, from, from experience from, from other violations we've dealt with. Like, is it a matter of, here, here's the paperwork and then it's a court matter? Or is it a show up in court, drawn out weeks, hundreds?
I believe that there's a show up in court, but not a drawn out thing. It's, you know, it's, it's black and white. And the judge will decide.
We're not going to give them half ones, you know, it's just like one, so we don't want to. Every single one of these cases is not going to be the same. There are violations you send and they're dealt with in a month. There are violations you send and they're not dealt with for years.
Yeah.
Literally years.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a.
I.
It's not like what is that?
Yeah.
It admittedly seems to me that we might, we have some experience.
Yeah, I think we got to sit down with the people who know what we're talking about.
And, and sort out who would be best doing this, but I think we might need them in the room.
Yeah, but for what it's worth, we have more people in and around that office with hands on these kinds of issues than ever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By 300%. So it's going to have to be one of those people. There's a part-time building inspector to take those duties so Donna can.
That's what, that's how I feel. Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, so, as you know, we reached our cap of 150 STRs for absent owner. There were four absent owners who responded to me before the last day's violation. I had many conversations with them. Some already paid or submitted most of their paperwork. Uh, they were really lacking the Ulster County Certificate of Authority or had the wall verbiage on their, uh, insurance papers. So meeting requirements required by our law. These four people could have completed the absentee raises extending to circumstances caused by life-changing and life-threatening events. Birth of a baby, accident with a head trauma, cancer treatments, and a widow maker heart attack. Those are the four. In my opinion, these folks made a serious effort to get their paperwork completed on time. Their app, no, their applications were sitting on my desk waiting. Then with the mail and folks coming into office, we met the cap. These are all absent owners, these four people. I am asking that we allow these four people to complete their applications and give them a license to operate for the safety of their guests and the peace of the neighbors. I feel it is our best option. Then when more STRs open, we'll add these people in the numbers to eventually get that number back down to 150. You know, because there will be people opening up. Um, if you don't wish to do this, I ask these four to be put on a waiting list and give them leniency on any violations since they had good intentions to comply with our law. P.S., I foresee no other requests of this kind on the board. I've contacted all others that did not apply or respond to our violation notices either personally or through their attorneys. And I have the four names here. So, I don't know, whatever you think. You guys at the cap, it's your law. So I can't just say to them, yeah, sure, jump on. So, you know, they made every effort.
It sounds like they were ahead of the curve too.
Yeah, and they, before the end of last month, they were like on the ball and calling me. The head trauma guy was the worst. The one guy called up crying. So, I mean, you know, it's like, oh.
I think for me personally, it's okay. I just, you know, it's the last one, first and last one.
Are we talking about raising the cap?
We're talking about increasing the cap.
Just allowing.
These allow more.
Well, we have to increase the cap to make them legal. We'd have to increase the cap by four people, so. Raise it from 150 to 154.
Well, you could temporarily raise the cap, because like I say, when others drop out, we won't fill those others.
We don't have to raise the secret.
Yeah, we won't fill.
We won't fill those positions with new applicants.
I would think it'd be better to say temporarily raise the cap. I, I don't know, legally wise. Then when you do your amendments on anything.
Better working to make it so that we can fulfill those, then I'm, yeah, I'm looking at you.
Yeah.
I might have to work that through, but I'm sure there's absolutely wording where, uh, the cap remains 150, but the, I'd assume the, the board authorizes an additional four.
Temporary.
Uh, for calendar year 2023 or for a 12-month period or what have you.
Okay.
I, I, we, I'm sure something along those lines could be came up with, yeah.
Is it something we can table till we have proper verbiage from the November meeting or do we want to do it now?
I think you can do a motion. She's giving me permission to do it. It's licensing.
That's all. If we're talking about verbiage, I'm just trying to make.
The, the meetings, November, I personally think we'd be better getting the wording right and then doing it at the November meeting. And these folks have to wait three weeks.
Cool.
Yeah, three weeks.
But you think I could call them and say it looks?
Does anybody have a problem with it? We get the verbiage down so we, Joyce can let them know that we can vote on it in November?
No, that's not a big deal. I mean, in our law, it does give us the authority to make a resolution to change the cap and to change the fees however we think it's necessary. But we can tweak the verbiage and do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't want to go back and bite us and have like, you know, somebody else come in and someone else can mend this and then.
Have a legal hassle of it.
Yeah.
Worth getting, right?
Okay, uh, with that, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.